For moment of silence and pledge. Just like to have a moment of silence this evening for people in our community that may be going through hard times, maybe wondering where their next meal is coming from, wondering if their job is in jeopardy, or just having a hard time. Another pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, fire evacuation. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can go out the back doors of the chambers to the parking lot or out these side doors, take your first left down the stairs and out to the parking lot. Kathy Kenrokel?
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Callen?
Here.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Here.
Mr. Gauss? Mr. Coburn?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay, board guests, LEAP program update.
All right, we're going to welcome Michelle Middleton, Assistant Superintendent for Critical Instruction, as well as John Diggs, Director of Operations, are going to give you a brief update on the learner engagement and attendance program, the LEAP program, which we are coming close to finalizing our first year in the program.
Great. So, thank you for having us back. Michelle and I had given you a brief overview of the program as we had planned to implement it back in September. We're here to just fill in the board on how our first year went and our outcomes from the program. So, just as a reminder, the LEAP program is a grant-funded opportunity to implement a relational, multi-visited home visit program designed as targeted intervention for students who have missed or have begun to miss too much school. Just some key points again from that same thing. LEAP is a voluntary program, is not a punitive or well-being visit, it's designed to support students and families, it's good for relationship building. The home visitations are scheduled in advance. We have teams that are going out to the, they travel to the homes in pairs. They can take place either in the home, they've taken place in community events, and in rare cases, we've had them at school sites and we've had them virtually, although it's usually not the ideal. We have made that accommodation in a few instances. So, it complements some of our existing attendance interventions, including our attendance teams, administrative home visits, and so on. An update from when we came last time, originally we said that the funding was going to end in December of this year. They have not increased funding, but they have extended the time that we can expend those grant funds, so we're going to be submitting a revision for how we're going to use the funds through June of 2026. The governor in his proposed budget had proposed extending funding for LEAP as an allocation from the state, so we'll see how that plays through with this, plays in the state budget process. So, I first wanted to thank our home visiting teams. We had home visiting teams for each one of our schools. They've done an excellent job maintaining contact with the families at their schools this year. Many of them have gone above and beyond in connecting, reaching out multiple times, trying multiple different modes to contact, staying in touch with families they've visited, scheduling second visits. A lot of the families, they've made connections with families that go beyond attendance. I'd also like to thank our home visitors. I've had many phone calls and emails with them trying to help identify some of the challenges of attendance. These could be internal processes, challenges in how we structured the grant and the home visit program, and they'd offered constructive feedback on how we can improve it. So, I just wanted to thank them again. They did an excellent job with our home visits this year. So, so far, we've, our home visitors have made 750 contacts throughout the year. That resulted in about 104 home visits. That number's a little bit lower than we had expected with the program. We've had a large number of contacts. We thought there may have been a higher uptake on the home visits. Home visits have been concentrated more at the secondary level, and that level seems to be more interested in receiving some of their support from the school in addressing some of the issues of attendance. The connections that were made with this program have been fantastic, though. All right, so although the number of home visits isn't exactly what we expected, some of the feedback we've received from families who have had home visitation teams has been fantastic. A perfect example is we had a family that moved to Enfield from Springfield. Their student was having issues of attendance in Springfield schools, and they felt like they, schools didn't even know their kid was there or not there. When they came to Enfield, the student was still having some attendance issues, but the mother, that she was thrilled that someone was reaching out to make sure that they felt welcomed and included in school and that someone actually saw them in the school. And there's been other tangential outcomes that we've noticed through the program as well. One of examples, and my favorite one, is there was a home visit for a family that was recent immigrants to the country. There was an issue of attendance with that family, and in the process of the conversation, they realized that, it was shared that a relative was not yet enrolled in school, but was of age to be at Enfield High School. They managed to connect them, tell them who to talk to. I was actually at the school just incidentally as this parent came to try and register their student. One of our home visitors from Eagle Academy was there and helped translate and explain the process of getting that other student registered for the school as well. So, those home visits kind of have some knock-on effects. So, one of the other tangential pieces there is we got some information. So, every time that a home visit was completed, our home visitors completed log entries, and those log entries, they asked the families what they consider the primary reason for student attendance issues. Although we'd like to get that other number down, some of the other areas are informative to us. Among, and this is highest among some of our secondary students, student disengagement, student mental health, student physical health, transportation, family issues were among the top. Childcare was, was rare, unstable housing suspension, student employment, and climate and culture were lower. So, that information helps us kind of target other interventions and programs in the school, knowing what other areas are challenges for student attendance. Kind of unexpected this year is I have up here, and this is coming directly from the state ed site, so I have our 23-24 chronic absenteeism rate. Now, when I say chronic absenteeism, that's a student who's missed 10% or more of school. So, if you're in September, you know, just missing two days and you could be, you know, chronically absent because there's only been that few days of school. So, this is kind of a running average of 10% as you go throughout the year. With the year 22-23 was the year that was used to identify us for the LEAP program, and most prior years had been relatively flat, as you kind of see for 23-24. I think we're having a hard time gauging our impact because of the anomalies of our current school year. The six months shown up there, so October through March, you see, we started off great with a significantly lower chronic absenteeism rate in October. There was a large spike in November. There was a security incidence at Enfield High School, which actually impacted student attendance for several days afterwards, which we think is a potential for that spike in November. And then, I don't know if you remember the extreme incidence of flu in February, I think there was a large number of students who were out for. What's that? Stomach bug and flu in February. So, on our, we had a LEAP district coordinator meeting in March, and of the 30 participating LEAP districts, they asked us what happened in February. There was only five of 30 that did not have significantly increased chronic absenteeism in that month. So, it's hard for us to fully gauge with this small a sample size as to the impacts of the program, yet with potentially to influencing external factors to, for this year. Go ahead.
Sorry, you didn't ask for questions, but this seat is all, like, all Enfield students?
Yep. So, that's everyone in the, yep. So, some year one challenges, and I think this is something that, you know, when we put in the grant, we didn't understand the level that would have the greatest impact. We developed the program to be having home visitors and kind of an equal representation across all grade levels, K-2, 3, 5, middle school, and high school. It turns out that the areas, and this is probably my misconception, the secondary level is where you're going to have your most impact. I was originally thinking that if you're setting the standards or the assistance at the younger levels, it will carry on through, but in, you know, meeting with other districts and seeing it, that most uptake for home visits is happening at your secondary level. And that's something we'll be looking at kind of moving into year two. The model chosen didn't necessarily align with our current attendance teams. What I mean by that is we have home visitors going out, reaching out to these families after school, setting up home visits after school. They're doing their work in their day as a behavior tech, a teacher, a school psychologist, or so on. The school attendance teams are also meeting during the day, so including your home visiting teams to get information and feedback on that during the day is hard because you'd have to put someone in to sub out those people during the day. A lot of other districts have chosen to have kind of paid individual home visitors who are then able to come to the school attendance teams. So, what we have is this kind of open loop in the communication. We have, the home visitors are going out, they're doing their home visits, they're recording their logs, but they're not necessarily able to engage in the follow-up for those student attendance team meetings, and it's something that we're looking to change, and I'll explain a little bit more as we go through. Program communication, we rolled out this LEAP program. We mentioned it at the Board of Ed meeting. There was some information that came out from the schools, but I think we could do a better job introducing home visitors to their school community as the year starts. Who are your home visitors? Where can you see them? How can we identify them? So that if they get a call from them, parents know who they are right off the bat. Time and contact of home visits, which I kind of mentioned before, these are happening in the evening or after school. There are some families that are working in the evening. Right, so we need to find a strategy for having contacts for that during the hours that those families are available. And then, just timeliness, when we rolled out the process, the school attendance teams were to meet, we would discuss them at the district attendance committee meeting, and then assign them to home visitors, but that could often lead in some, lead to some gaps between when they're identified and when they're contacted for a home visit, and I think that's an area that we can certainly improve. So, we're looking to change it a little bit. Later tonight, you're going to get a new policy for attendance, and I think one of the areas is there's still confusion around how attendance is counted, what chronic absenteeism is, and we're going to be working to change our regulation and handbook to be clear and communicate that out more. Just today, this afternoon, we signed a contract for a product called EduClima, which will, which will go to our, which will connect to our Power School, and will actually be able to build interventions in EduClima. We'll take those, and we'll also be giving LEAP home visitors access as interventionist within the system, where they'll be able to report back to the attendance teams the outcome of their home visits. We're also taking and using our Parent Square as a new communication tool. There's an attendance function. In there, we'll be able to communicate out when a student is absent, and there'll be an option for parents to provide documentation directly through the app so that we can verify student absences. That, using EduClima is going to help close that leap between the school attendance teams and the home visitors. They'll be interventionist, they'll, their information on how the LEAP visit went, if they're able to contact, if the family refused, we'll go back to the team in real time. So, as they complete it, they'll be able to see it instantly. We're going to try and better communicate our attendance procedures early and often. So, if you're getting an attendance warning, we hope to include information on what exactly is, what are verified absences, what are unverified absences, which ones require documentation, which one, from a professional, which ones require documentation just from the parent. And we'll communicate that out in, better in the handbooks. We're going to communicate that out in our beginning of the year and parent assemblies, meetings, and so on. And we also plan to introduce our home visitors more comprehensively to the community as a whole at the beginning of the school year, and that's when we're going to focus on LEAP the most for the next school year, is hitting them early and often at the beginning of the year so that we don't getting to an issue of high number of absences before a family's being reached out to. So, just in kind of overview, we have a talented and committed home visitation teams across all of our schools. I couldn't be happier with the work that they've done throughout the year, but I think our option, our areas that we can improve the program are in our systems for tracking and communicating, and those changes will help leverage our team's impact on student attendance. Are there any questions on any of this?
Ms. Pickett? Sorry, and I asked during your presentation. I apologize. One, thank you both, and I do want to second your comment of thanking the teams. I've heard from a couple folks about their experience, and you can tell their personal commitment, and it is more than just about like doing an attendance home visit. They're invested in the students and the families that they're meeting, so I want to thank them. I also think it's really important that you shared how they're giving you feedback, especially around the system pieces, and how you're using that feedback to change how we're doing things. So, I think that's a great example of the importance of staff speaking up and sharing when they're noticing things that aren't working efficiently or effectively, and us adjusting our internal procedures around those things. You mentioned the new attendance policy, so a wonder of mine is, has, I'd be interested in getting feedback from the staff and from families around reading, especially not so much the policy because the policy isn't much, but the regulations to say, are those helpful? Are they clear? Are these something that I can adhere to? I know some of them are like legislatively mandated, but some of them, we do have some flexibility on what we are requiring and how we're requiring it. So, I'd love to see if there's a way that we could get real-time feedback from our staff and families around the policies we're passing. I know we publicly post them on our website. I don't know if we've ever gotten anybody who's officially given feedback to a policy that way, but I think there's some really cool ways to get meaningful feedback from those impacted by our policies in these types of ways. I'm interested to hear more about the secondary engagement. I would say that I don't think that's actually a trend. Typically, families are harder to engage in the secondary world. However, my wonder is if there's common root causes for why they're struggling with getting their kids to school versus the family stigma of the younger grades of what it means to get a home visit and what you might be opening yourself up to. So, a wonder that I have, because I think there's definitely a need in the younger grades for supporting good attendance and building those habits of good attendance, and I'm wondering if it's somewhat of a model adjustment of like, what do we do for secondary home visits and what do we do for younger student home visits? I think that youth were incredibly thoughtful about hiring staff at our buildings, so I like that model, too. So, I heard like other districts hire home visitors. I think it's amazing that it's people in our buildings who know our kids in different roles and ways. I think it helps reduce the stigma of who's coming to your house and doing the home visit. I also think it helps build those healthy relationships and connections to our school and staff. So, I like, I like that, and I hope that doesn't adjust. I'm excited to hear about EduClima. PS Weathersfield uses EduClima, so if you want to know about how they might be using it. I think it's data, having data but using data in meaningful ways is the most important piece, so having data systems that talk. A question I do have is, you are obviously collecting data on home visits, reasons why kids are missing school, things like that. My understanding, there's some type of home visit log. Where is that logged versus what's going to go in EduClima? Will it be like two entries?
Sure. So, so that's a, you're asking excellent questions, so let me just try and see if I can get a couple of them at a time. We do plan to have home visitors remain at each of the schools, and there is a certain value to that because it gives them someone to connect to at their individual school, which is why we proposed that. So, I've been there as the home visitors did a home visit the night before, and they're waiting at the door at Enfield High to make sure that the student gets there, you know what I mean, and the student's welcomed into school. At the elementary level, and I don't mean to say that home visits aren't happening, you know, just as we were doing a pre, teacher feedback, staff's feedback session the other day, two were leaving to go do, you know, a second home visit with a family. They are happening there. I think at the high school, I think parents might be struggling and are willing to accept, more willing to accept some help from the school in getting their student to school. It just seems to take up more, and it could also be a little bit in the data in that the secondaries are so concentrated with a number of families within one building that there's, you know, that higher trend towards it. But it took a long time, so I know at some of the times at Enfield Street, it went pretty long before they had their first home visit, you know what I mean? There's fewer at Parkman, but the middle school and high school have a number. EduClima, we plan to use it to collect data and have the intervention, so it'll be the place to have the trigger. So, once it's, the threshold's met, we'll have an intervention that will be assigned and goes out to the interventionist, the data will be collected back. Yes, there might be some double entry. So, as part of the LEAP program, there is a Qualtrics log when they complete a scheduling call, when they complete a home visit, a follow-up call, they need to complete a log entry. We have a separate process if they don't make contact because we only count that if they make contact with a family. I did reach out to, at advance, to see if there was a way to do a Power School export to make sure that we don't have to duplicate the work if unnecessary. We still need to work that out because you have to set up the tables and export correctly in order to make sure that they get the data that they're looking for in the program. I have reached out. Without it in place, it's hard to, we just signed the contract, without it in place, it's hard to give a definitive answer on that, but we hope to, if possible, reduce double entry.
Thank you. I apologize, and I don't mean to be putting you on the spot. I just know that EduClima is a great system for multiple data points and like creating dashboards and all of that awesome stuff, so very excited to hear about this work. A couple, sorry, just a couple other wonders. I had asked about the attendance comparison graph that you were showing, and my wonder is if we are seeing impact on the students that we've made contact with and have done home visits. So, like, what were, what were their attendance data looking like last year? What is it looking like this year? Then, what is the impact potentially long-term on this kind of work? Not that you need to answer, you don't need to answer that right now, but just thinking about tracking the direct impact of the interventions that we're doing might be an interesting data point to look at. The other wonder I had, sorry, oh, home visitors, do they get to come? So, I know there was extensive training to get them on board. Do they come together at any point? Is there any continued PD? I just think about the value of their skillset and the diverse group of people that we're using to be home visitors. I think that's just an interesting kind of test group for us as far as multiple perspectives and hearing.
We're on two sessions for them additionally. One at the last one, which was a January one, we actually asked them to share what they thought were the most effective strategies back with the entire group. So, they talked about, you know, what is effective when you reach out to families? If they're not interested, what strategies do you use to leave the door open for future contact? And that was an example I just heard the other day from a home visitor. We reached out before, they weren't interested, but then they heard back, you know, actually months later, you know, because they had been effective in kind of leaving the door open for, for future contact. We'll have a, hopefully, another session forum at the end of the year to kind of go over some of the proposed changes and then get any last feedback so we can finalize our revisions for next year.
Anybody else? Dr. Callen?
Thank you very much for this presentation. It was really very helpful. I think the thing that really impresses me most about the program is it's positive and not punitive, and I think you can always get better results with a positive approach. You had mentioned that, I hope I have this right, 104 of the 750 people that you contacted actually responded is.
Accepted a home visit. Some would say no, some would say maybe in the future, and with those contacts, some of those could be scheduling calls and follow-up calls, and there might be frequent follow-ups, like just check back in, in a month or two. So, it's contacts, you know what I mean? Not necessarily, so one person could be contacted four or five times.
I see. Okay. The impression I got was, you have a pretty good track record as long as you can get your foot in the door. The problem is getting your foot in the door, and the state of Connecticut has an incredibly big disengagement problem, largely owing to the fact that so many families in the town are Alice families, and when they're preoccupied with such basic needs, they're not too terribly likely to invite you into their homes and talk to you about, you know, their child's absenteeism. I'm not really sure exactly how that can be approached, but I guess this is just a comment. I don't think we're going to be able to, we might not be able to improve much on the numbers in terms of actually getting our foot in the door until and unless we're able to address Alice problems in the community and those families. So, just an observation, something to think about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Diggs, for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions, and one of them you may have answered, but I know with the numbers talking about contacts and the home visits, so what is the like number of students or families that are enrolled? I know you talked about like this voluntary, like opt-in. Is there a set number?
Not necessarily, not necessarily enrolled. We'll reach out to, we reach out to, you know, we've probably reached out to 200 or 300 families throughout the year, assigning them to home visitors to make contacts. I think our uptake rate is probably in the teens to 20%, you know, percent of families who respond, you know what I mean, willing to accept a home visit. Some just don't reply, others will, you know what I mean, say maybe at a later time. So, you know, we would check contacts, you know what I mean? Some people are making kind of multiple attempts or multiple.
Okay, that makes sense.
Once the final numbers are done for the year, it'll be a little easier to break all of that out.
Okay. No, I look forward to that, and I know, so then in regards to the home visits, like 104 or whatever it was, it could be cert, like 70 families, and a couple of them have got visited two or three times within the year, correct? Just to make sure I was understanding that.
Yeah, they could have duplicate visits. We've had, I know of, you know, several that have had two home visits. So, they'll make, they'll make one earlier in the year, and they'll kind of follow up and, you know, see are there issues? Are there any issues continuing? Have we addressed them? Have we connected, you know, to a school or to someone at social services who may be able to help if needed? So, yeah.
Okay. No, that makes sense.
Again, as we get to the year-end summary, that's where we'll.
Yeah, you'll have a more complete picture of it. And then, looking at, and I know you kind of touched on it, when you were looking at the data for the reasons for absences, that biggest group was just kind of labeled "other." Now, is that just kind of like a check-in-the-box? Or do you guys write "other"? Is there any more like qualitative reasons that you guys capture that might be like a short answer to kind of dig into that?
That's something that we actually hope to get to zero for next year, because we hope that the conversation goes deep enough that we can get to one or more of those other causes. I think that's something that just might require more training and conversation with home visitors. I think that's not unique to Enfield, that we have a lot of people going, you know, checking that other for now, but as we've had our coordinator meetings with representatives at LEAP, they've asked us to work more to get that other field down.
No, and that makes sense, and I know to like Ms. Pickett's point, when we're talking about data, it's kind of hard to do anything with that data because "other" could be, it could be truly unknown, or it could be any number of individual reasons.
Yeah, so I think some of it can be that the family might say multiple things, and it's just the home visitor, you know what I mean, doesn't know that, you know, to check.
To capture, yeah, like the travel, and then the daycare, employment, whatever, like some of the more traditional things that you may expect that may be causing that. Awesome. And then, the last thing, too, and I think Mrs. Pickett kind of asked this, too. So, the grade level impact, you know, you said it was more focused on the secondary level. Can you maybe just kind of unpack a little more like why you haven't seen or why your neighboring districts are less successful at the elementary level?
I can't speak for any other districts. I have, I mean, I've heard, you know, just as we've had conversations with, you know, breakout sessions that know that they've had more uptake from their secondary, and I've heard one piece, and I would, you know, just believe this is true without much data, is that the families, when they know that there's a credit associated with the absences, that that can sometimes raise the stakes for it because they're, just knowing that, oh, if they have too many absences, they could lose credit in this course, you know what I mean, and I'll take any help I can get in making sure that they, you know, they are able to.
Yeah, to get through with the high school or whatever. Okay, that makes sense, and I know you guys kind of touched on some other reasons, so I was just kind of diving in, because I think it would.
Isn't captured in our log, so I mean, I'm giving you, you know what I mean.
Painting with like a broad brush, yeah, and I know, and the reason I kind of just kind of hone in on that is I know, because we're talking about takeaways and plans for next year, so, you know, if we are going to devote, or if the LEAP coordinators and personnel are going to focus more on the secondary, I just want to make sure we're not neglecting the elementary for any reason.
We're not going to, we're going to still offer it at all levels. I think we just might need to change some of the strategies for communication at the younger grades, and I think that's something I could have been a little clearer on. I think we need to just change the communication strategies targeted towards each of the levels.
Awesome. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Akri?
Sean, just to piggyback off of Mr. Coburn, when you, when they say "other," that means the family does not have to disclose. Sean, just to piggyback off of Mr. Cover, when you, when they say other, that means the family does not have to disclose?
The family doesn't actually fill out the log, so that's completed by the home visitors. They, when they're taking a home visit, there's no notes. They don't bring a device. There's no, you know what I mean, phones or anything like that. So they're having a conversation with a family. So it's, a part of it can be that they might not fully remember. If, some of these home visits can go for 90 minutes. Some are, you know, short, 20, 30 minutes, but I've heard of them and I've seen some of the logs for them going an extended period of time. So when it comes time to them completing that log following that night or the next day at work, you know, they might not just be capturing the essence of that conversation in one of those other fields and may just choose other.
Okay, I didn't know that if it was private, they just don't have to disclose or have to say, you know, why my child is absent.
You know, even during the first meeting, sometimes they're just getting to know the family. And they might not even on that initial meeting, get too deep into the reasons or causes of attendance issues. They're kind of just working to build that relationship. So an initial meeting could start with, you know, tell me how your student's adjusting to the fourth grade. You know, what are their interests? What are their, you know what I mean, hobbies? They're getting to know the family. And so, I mean, in a few instances, I think that other could just be they didn't get to, in the conversation, in the natural flow of the conversation, you know, something they could identify as a major cause of attendance. We'll try and get that, you know, that process refined. We've been having conversations with the people who are coordinating the LEAP program at the state and for at advance. They are fantastic. They're hoping to next year offer kind of a 201 level training. So we had our LEAP 101 training. They're hoping to offer kind of an advanced training course in the future that will help kind of refine techniques more.
Any else?
I was wondering too if the increase in absences in November just has to do with the fact that we have, you know, Veterans Day, we have a lot of half-days, then we have Thanksgiving break. And I think that, I know like in high school, especially when kids can drive themselves, they will tell you that they are doing nothing on their half-day. And then parents leave for work. This is personal experience. Parents leave for work and then they don't go to school. So I, and I think for parents too, even of younger kids, maybe they take Thanksgiving week off to travel to, you know, because they're going to see family, maybe they're not going to see them at Christmas that they're doing, or their whatever chosen holiday they celebrate, maybe they're going to gather at Thanksgiving. So I, you know, everybody, well, maybe not everybody, but I've heard November referred to as no school November. So.
By me, yeah.
That's where we see the fact in November. I do understand why we, especially at the secondary level, see those absences. Because again, I think once kids get their licenses, especially when they're seniors, that senioritis is a real thing. But what helps is the credits and making sure they, you know, they understand. They won't graduate if you're missing credits. Like if you don't show up, you will not graduate. You will not walk. There is nothing, you know, they have the credit recovery, but that's not for you not showing up for school because you didn't feel like coming in. So those are just my thoughts on it. So I understand why it seems like you're focusing on the secondary. And I think that the parents at that level are kind of, you know, exasperated with their kids that are just kind of like, hey, I've got my license and I'm just tired. We were doing nothing in this class. But then you're also offering help of families that are in just different situations that really can't get their kids to school there or, you know, maybe there's other things going on in the home that they need your help. So I thank you both for being here and working on this. And I love to see that you guys are taking away and evolving and, you know, trying to fit it into the model that works best for Enfield Public Schools.
Anybody else?
Question. The EduClimer program, that, is that like a one-time purchase with the grant money? And you don't have to pay for like software? Or is it like the state provides it or?
We're actually changing product. So currently in Power School, we have an add-on, Performance Matters. Performance Matters is, you know, already linked to Power School. It used to, was the old one we used to have.
Performance Plus.
Yeah, it used to, replaces Performance Plus. So we've had it for a number of years. What we're doing is we're integrating into EduClimer, not just attendance, but the, all of our academics and behavioral in there. So we're going to drop the contract for Performance Matters. We're going to drop the contract for Swiss. We're going to drop the contact for, what's the math?
Extra math.
Extra math. And then this is going to replace those, it's going to replace those allocations in the budget with this. And it comes in under that amount. So we'll be budgeting that amount moving forward. So it was already, it's replacing other products that we're consolidating into just one platform.
Cool. Very cool. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for, I don't have many more questions because you gave a lot on policy night. So thank you for all of the information you gave us then too. Everybody else is good? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report, Mr. Macio.
All right. Let's turn it over to the Enfield High School student representatives.
Good afternoon, everyone. So today's going to be a little bit different from me and Liv. We wanted to go over first a little bit of the agenda of like stuff that's coming up. And then after that, I was just going to talk about a few comments. First things first, tomorrow we have our eighth grade visit. So JFK is coming over. Super excited for that. We have a few volunteers. We also have, May 1st is our decision day, so seniors are able to wear their college gear or their career gear. So if you're going to this college or if you're like, let's say a firefighter, you wear your firefighter gear. Well, not full gear, like a shirt. We also have prom tickets being sold. They're sold only on B-days this year. So we did have it a few days ago, but our next two days are going to be May 1st and 3rd. It's always during third period on our lower-level lobbies. Permission slips are needed and if you're bringing a guest, obviously you need a guest form. And it's going to be only cash or Venmo. AP exams start on Monday and will be continuing to the next two weeks from in the morning to in the afternoon. The schedule and times are online, but I'll just go over kind of in order. First week is going to be bio, chem, government and politics, English Lit, comparative government, stats, US history, macroeconomics, and then week two, it's going to be calc, APs, English Lang, physics, Spanish, and psych. And then over to Liv.
Good evening, everyone. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so be sure to thank one of your favorite teachers. We have nomination forms that you can fill out to thank one of your favorite teachers on the announcements or send a personal card to them. Next Wednesday, the 7th, is School Nurse Appreciation Day, so be sure to thank one of them. The 59th Annual Art Show happened this weekend. I heard, I was not able to attend, but I heard there was a lot of beautiful art and I got a lot of good feedback from people who attended. May 8th, there will be a band and jazz concert at Enfield High. And finally, Safe Grad will be happening on Tuesday, June 17th, from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM at Sunny's Place. You must register and no walk-ins are allowed. I think Izzy has a little more information on that though, so, yeah. And back to Izzy.
Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, we just had a student advisory group today and they talked a little bit about our bathroom situation. And I'll help Mr. Macio out with the town council, right? Because our bathroom situation has gotten a little bit out of hand. We talked a little bit about how, first off, some of the working, the sinks aren't working, the sensors. We don't really have as much access to soap in some bathrooms. There aren't any soap. And I mean, if we learned anything from COVID, I think we need that to wash our hands. Lack of paper towels, as well as just like ability to hang your bags in the bathroom because I don't want my bag on the floor. And also just accessibility to clean walls. A lot of the time when students go into the bathroom, the walls are not noticeably clean, if you know what I mean.
I think you were referring to the stalls.
Yes, the stalls specifically.
Like graffiti or?
No. No.
Wow, okay.
Yes. And I know Ms. Clark talked a little bit about how we had.
And I, hold on, I think you made specific reference to the female bathrooms with the stalls.
Specifically.
Izzy and I don't have any experience in the males bathrooms, so we wouldn't know, but.
Good answer.
But we did have a guy in student advisory say that those were.
But there were males at student advisory today and they did have concerns about the cleanliness of the bathrooms.
Yes. That's why I pointed out both. Not that I've been in the boys bathroom.
You said no, you said no paper towels too, right?
Yes. A few people have said, yeah.
Yep, got that down. Yep.
Yeah. Also just the fact that for the paper towels, someone mentioned that they get jammed a lot. I think it's specifically in the boys bathroom. They just get jammed. So I don't know what they're doing over there, but it's not coming out.
And I know this happens sometimes, but there will be like wet spots around the toilet. And I don't think, I think it's just from condensation from the toilet itself, but it gets slippery in there. Sometimes you have to like close down stalls because it's like there's water all over the floor.
Yeah, that's what I was saying too. That goes along with like the, I was talking about that to Mr. Macio, with the bag, with the bag hooks because the puddle just, it like gets longer. Like it, it doesn't get cleaned up, so.
Is it because there's, there was no bag hooks originally? Or the bag hooks have been taken down, removed?
Removed somehow. Somehow they were removed in others and not others.
Okay, gotcha.
Is there condensation because the fans in the AC isn't working correctly?
I don't think it's that.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, there's a whole bunch of, it's, it's a lot of information I think we received today at student advisory that we'll pass along to the DPW and see what they can do about it. I.
Is it concentrated in an area or is it just ran, just throughout school-wide?
Not really in an area. It's every bathroom, but an area in the bathroom.
No, I think they mean in terms of area of the school.
Oh, no.
So is it like E-wing, A-wing?
It's in every bathroom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the second thing I wanted to address was Mayor Nelson's comments about agreeing with, agreeing with Mr. Macio. I just wanted to clear up that I don't think, I know some people had some concerns about him mentioning Black and Latino Studies or Black Lit. I do not think Mr. Macio meant those. And I'll be ahead of her. I take Black Lit. I would definitely not like to see that shut down. It's not mandatory. So we're not forcing anyone to take Black Lit or Black and Puerto Rican Studies. It's an option you can take. And also the teachers that teach those courses are very enthusiastic to teach those. So I wouldn't want to take that from Mr. Perdus or Mr. Allegro. But I'll also say those classes are definitely one of the best classes I've taken. I've, I went down to Howard a few days ago and I had a friend, she took Black and Latino Studies and she was asking if that was still there and still an opportunity because she said that was one of the best classes she's, she's ever taken. So I would definitely not like to see those taken away because they're just an essential part of history. Like it's history, it's not political. It's what we need to be learning in schools. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Is that a very popular course? And are there, is there a great deal of diversity among the student population taking that course?
I will say, I think, definitely think there's a lot of diversity taking those. This, I've taken a lot of honors courses and I've talked a little bit about how just because we're a predominantly white institution, there aren't a lot of classes where I can take for honors that have other people of color in our classes. And when I took Black Lit, that was not an issue. There, it was very seldom that I'm the majority and in that class I was the majority. And it was definitely a popular class. I mean, we've got a big group of people that are taking that. For Black and Latino Studies, I also think they were a pretty big class that was taking it. I hadn't taken it personally because I have taken all my history classes, but I think that was also huge.
And it's a semester class or a year, a year class?
It's a semester class, so.
That's like a semester's credit worth of.
It's an elective. So these, these are courses that are elective courses. Obviously you want a wide range, diversity of courses that kids can take. And I will say this is the second district that I've been in since the state mandated these programs be brought in. Both, in both districts, they're incredibly popular courses. A lot of different kids are interested in them. If they can fit them in their schedule, they'll take them. And as a semester course, as an elective, and what's interesting, it seems like, and this is the case in both districts, phenomenal teachers teaching these courses. I mean, he's an outstanding instructor and I think that is probably a lot of the reasons that the kids gravitate to it. Again, it, this is, it's not a graduation requirement. This isn't a mandate. It's an elective. You take this course, as I was speaking to Izzy earlier, you take this course because you're interested in it? Just like I would take a course in, what did I say, pottery, if I was interested in pottery. I mean, that's where student choice really comes into play.
The Black and Latino Studies course is a full-year course though, that is an elective. Black Lit is a half-year course.
I can only speak for, oh, sorry. I can only speak for Black Lit because I take the other one, but Black Lit is only a semester course, but I believe it's only for seniors because I only got the option my senior year.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify because we had a nice presentation, the Black Latino course in curriculum. And if I recall, I don't, I don't have my notes on me right now, but I believe that was fully enrolled. And I, I don't know if we had more than one section.
I can, I'll do some digging on it and I'll get you some information. Friday update. Always looking for material, Dr. Callen. All right. Anything else? Izzy, you good? All right. Thank you very much. Couple of, I've got a number of different things I want to update everybody on. First one being the pre-refereendum, staff input sessions are underway. We scheduled several of those sessions for all of the Enfield Public School staff to attend. They're open, they're available. It's a voluntary if you wish to stay after school to attend them. Mr. Dig and I, along with Mr. Longy, go around to the different schools. We held our first one on April 24th. It was at Eli Whitney. I would say we had about 15 staff members stay and give us some input and perspective. It is incredibly important that we'll continue these. I'll just read these dates out quick. May 5th, we're at Barnard. The 12th, we are at Crandall. 13th, we're at Parkman. The 15th, we're at Enfield Street. The 19th, we're at Memorial. The 21st, we are at Stowe. The 28th, we are at Eagle Academy. And June 3rd, we will be taking all of the information, putting it all together and then sharing it out as one large sort of encompassing input. And that's going to be shared out at JFK. So June 3rd, if you want the summary, that's the one to go to, June 3rd at JFK.
So, quick question. Can any members of the pre-ref committee come and just listen in?
Yeah, we've had, we had, we were at Whitney, so Principal Flanagan attended. And she's on the pre-ref committee as well. Everybody's input is valuable. So whatever input that we're, that, we're just trying to gather what people are really looking for. We had a, we had a very nice session and I'll say that we, we sort of had to shut it down at 5:00 o'clock. We started it at 3:45 and Mr. Longy's like, I gotta go eat. It's 5:00 o'clock. Not really, not really, but it was 5:00 o'clock. So we wanted people to be able to get home and do what they needed to do.
Charlotte, can I, thank you very much for asking that because when I spoke to Randy this weekend, he wanted to know, you know, how the sessions were going, if they started. So I can give this information then to the modernization committee and then let them know. And then June 3rd would be, okay, I, I just want to make sure because that was actually in my question during the update for the modernization. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to keep going on the pre-ref referendum. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
I just had one follow-up question. And you said, so for example, if a staff member was interested in attending one of these, but they were just out or couldn't attend the Barnard one, they're welcome to go to the Crandall one, et cetera. So I just wanted staff to be aware that if that date, that we're going to be in your building does not work for you, feel free to attend any of those dates. Thank you.
Thank you very much for clearing that up. Anybody else regarding that portion? I do want to give you also an update. And for those that are listening in that may not be aware, but the request for qualifications and proposal was actually publicly advertised starting yesterday, Monday. So that did go out. So that is for architectural engineering contract. And that will be open until May 19th, 11:00 AM specifically on May 19th. So what will happen after those come in, those will be opened and then the pre-ref referendum committee will get back together. And it's their goal to be able to provide a firm recommendation to town council no later than June 9th. They're hoping to have the contract awarded to that architectural firm tentatively ended June, June 27th. So we are moving along in terms of this process. So we are moving along in terms of this process. Early release days for staff professional learning. We have Wednesday, April 30th. All of the Enfield Public Schools students are going to be dismissed early with lunch so that staff can attend afternoon professional learning events. I believe you have a copy of the professional learning topics in your packet. Special Board of Education meeting. We, you have slated, the board will hold a special meeting on Wednesday, May 7th. That is going to be in Mr. Longy's office over at Alcorn. And that is for the purpose of discussing my evaluation. I can make sure that you have proper amounts of food and refreshments or whatever it is that you're looking for. Don't hesitate to let me know and we'll get Mr. Longy's office all set up nice. Can't hurt, right? And for my public school update, I do want to, two, two items. First of all, I was alerted on Friday. I received an email from the state and it was related to the audit that they complete at the end of a school construction project. So that audit, basically they're looking for either agreement or disagreement and you need to sign off and send that back. We were in agreement, so I did send that back to the school construction unit of the Connecticut Administrative Services. That is basically the final step for closing out. Now here's the interesting part, the Enfield High School project. So that project's been closed for a number of years, but you know, the state takes their time and makes sure they do a complete formal audit. They don't want to be sending us back any money and they don't want to be owed any money. So there, here's, there's the purpose of the audit. So that is the final step, that closes it out. That will allow them to provide the town of Enfield their final reimbursement. Because basically we pay out, or the town of Enfield pays out and then you get reimbursement back from the state. That's going to be a hair over $4.3 million. That would be the final reimbursement. And no timeline on when or if that would actually occur. When that, excuse me, it will occur, but no timeline on when that money would be sent to the town. I will say that the gentleman that I spoke with at the state, basically he sends me the draft, I review it, sends to John Wilcox as well. We review it, if we're in agreement, it goes back to him. He then sends me the final audit, which he also sends over to another department. They then cut the check, if you will. So should be coming. Lastly, for those who weren't able to watch the public hearing last evening, any interested party who wishes to find the presentation that Charlotte and I provided on behalf of the Board of Education to the, to the town council and to the public that were in attendance, it's on the district website. I also had Dr. Wiley push out a Parent Square notice to the entire Enfield Public Schools community so that if you wanted to have a copy of that presentation, you could. I would do, I would like to thank, you know, everybody who was able to attend, especially appreciative of the positive comments that came from just general townspeople that were there. It was nice to receive those comments. I should all, I should, it would, it shouldn't go without being said that while the comments are getting directed to me, you know, there's a team of people that spent a lot of time putting that together. So I owe a lot of thanks to an outstanding group of folks to help me along with that. And lastly, I'll just let you know that the percentages that were included for last evening were, the town was about, was 4.67% of an increase. The Board of Education, as you know, you approved it, 5.57%. When you meld the two of them together, the overall town increase is 5.12%. And the town council is downstairs right now deliberating about it. I believe they have another evening set up tomorrow night as well. So if you're interested, please don't hesitate to turn on your YouTube videos or turn on Enfield Public Affairs TV and you can go ahead and watch that. That is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macio. Can I just ask one clar- do we know when they're voting on the budget? Is it the 5th or the 12th?
It has to be by the 16th, so.
I believe it has to be done by May 12th.
Yeah, I believe it's scheduled for their May 12th meeting.
Yeah, that was, the May 12th was the date I remember him stating in both his video and live.
All right. Audiences. Maureen? Yep, you're the only one on the list, so let me do this.
Okay. Scattered thoughts just from listening. I didn't come here with anything in my brain except contact the town council, tell them to approve the budget as written. If you want our schools to be better, you need to get in hold of them. Okay, on to what was talked about tonight. About the LEAP program. When very few were attributed to school climate or culture, but there was some, a large to student disengagement and mental health. I think that's another way of saying school culture, school climate. Why are our kids disengaged? They don't feel seen, they don't feel heard, they don't feel valued. They don't feel, while there are definitely individuals within the building that they trust and will go to, they don't have the confidence when you go above that level. Needs to change. My opinion about absences, when you make two tardies equal one absence, you're racking up the numbers on that. And I think that is a very foolish way to try and encourage kids to get into class. Teenagers don't have long-term processing at most often. You tell them in September, October, November, you're getting too many tardies. You're going to end up not getting credit. Hello, that's June, I'm not worried about that. My friends are in the hall, I want to talk to them. It needs to be a more immediate consequence. You get two tardies, you get a lunch detention. That's an immediate consequence. That's something they care about. They can't have their lunch with their friends. I think it would be a much more effective thing. You guys can comment after if you'd like to agree with that or disagree. Why secondary, well first, why, my opinion about why the elementary is not getting the same level of engagement? We have a lot of poverty in our town. Unfortunately, DCF equates poverty with criminality or neglect oftentimes, not intentionally, but their, um, I forget the word for it, but their reasonings and their checklist for whether a person is a good parent or not, or if it's a safe home or not, are often based upon things that are attributable to poverty. And they'll yank that kid rather than provide the support to that family to address that issue. They'll give the money to a foster parent before they'll give it to the parent. So a lot of those parents and families are afraid, oh crap, I'm not having a mandatory reporter come in my house. I don't want DCF to even be, I don't want any, anybody's radar besides the fact that my kid is in school. Stay the hell away from me. So DCF needs to get their act together before you're going to get better engagement on the elementary level, in my humble opinion, which, you know, we all know what that is. For the secondary, I think you're right, that the families are open to it because they're frustrated. Teens oftentimes, you know, they're disengaging from their parents. They're not going to listen to them. They're like, oh, lecture number 493. Where the parents are open to and looking for backing and knowing that their kid is more apt to hear and internalize something from a person that they respect in the school. There are some of those. I can, I can, you know, the sit meetings were great. And the words that we had spoken so many times were now coming from voices other than ours. And we were providing a united front, united and consistent expectations. I heard that, I'll be done in a second. Let's see. My, my son takes a Black and Puerto Rican history class. First half of the year, first semester is Black. Second semester is Puerto Rican. It's an excellent course. He's, he's, he's knocking it out of the park because it's engaging, it's interesting, it's valuable to him. Bathrooms, they need to fill the open custodian positions. They, they canned half of the staff. Gee, why do you think it's not staying clean? They need to fill those positions. The custodians in the other buildings can't keep up with just a couple of hours overtime here and there. Thank you, bye.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, moving on. Board, board members' comments. Mr. Coburn.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start off by welcoming students and staff from, back from April break. I hope they enjoyed their, excuse me, their time off. And we're looking at the last two months of the school year. It's hard to believe summer is just around the corner. I just want to recognize that Tuesday, April 22nd, was Bus Driver Appreciation Day. The EPS community had the opportunity to send a huge thank you to our bus drivers for all they do. Students composed artwork, bus drivers received some sweet treats and members of our PTO waved and cheered them on. As one of our student reps mentioned, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. This is a nationwide celebration and an opportunity to demonstrate our appreciation of the dedication and hard work that happens in our classroom to the over 440 teachers that strive to make EPS exceptional and foster the growth and achievement of our students. Thank you. Next week is also Enfield Unplugged, an initiative of free ideas and activities to help families unplug from electronic devices, screen time and reconnect in person. Please check Parent Square for the full schedule. And note that there is a pledge form, which doubles as an entry form for a raffle prize. While our school's budget for next year has moved forward to our fiscal authority for their determination on appropriations, I just kind of wanted to take a quick moment just to recognize that there is a lot of community dialogue and discourse on the topic. I wanted to thank everyone involved in the process and those that have reached out to make their opinions known. I made my individual specific remarks during the discussion and action by this board back in February and the process is now fully within the hands of the council. By the time we have our next regular meeting on May 13th, the budget should be adopted by the town council's resolution, which according to their current schedule is slated for May 12th. Regarding comments and numerous versions of the school portion of the budget, there is only one board-approved budget. During the process to get there, however, there were numerous versions of the superintendent's proposed budget and that final draft provided by the superintendent was adjusted based on a directive from the board focused on the desire to reinvest newly identified savings. Thanks to greater focus on efforts on transparency, the full budget history is visible online and members of the public can review meetings where the budget was discussed, with the minor exception of our February 19th budget workshop, which was not recorded for television. Looking further on in our agenda, I'm glad we're moving to work on the superintendent's evaluation and I hope that we can collaborate on a fair and objective final product. I want to continue to mention my appreciation for the current superintendent's clear and thorough weekly updates. My goal is that the board will continue to make effective, rational and data-driven decisions. We're also continuing to review and analyze various topics of concern, such as student behavior, discipline, instances of protective custody and other medical transport. Once information is compiled and sanitized and any final decisions are made to include policies and procedures, I hope we will continue to share those outputs transparently and hold ourselves accountable for those decisions. And I would like to end with a quote that I've been incorporating into my board member comments from Marcus Aurelius in his book Meditations. The things you think about determine the quality of your mind. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Ms. Akri?
I attended the annual arts festival last Friday night at EHS. The exhibition was entitled Elsewhere. Of course, I saw amazing visual art done by our talented Enfield students. One of my favorite exhibits that, to me, that stood out was the Pez artwork, the characters, the candy, famous candy. But there was also so much other artwork that demonstrated our students' creativity and talents and skills in the visual arts. And there was utilization of different mediums of artwork. Kudos to Mr. Doobie and his talented art teachers who bring out the best in our students. Thank you to the Women's Club of Enfield for their partnership and congratulations to all the Enfield students who participated in this festival. I also enjoyed listening to Mr. Repucci's Chamber Orchestra Ensemble. As usual, they did a fine job. I didn't get a chance to hear Ms. Tillman and Mr. Armstrong's Music Honor Society Ensemble, but I am sure it sounded beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Who would like to go next? Ms. Pickett?
First, I just want to piggyback on something that Izzy said around JFK visiting the high school. I, I know those transition meetings must be coming up. My daughter is going to be moving up to Parkman. We haven't heard any official information, but I do think, kind of thinking of those transition years, also interested in maybe ways that our home visiting could target those transition years. Something I'm wondering, especially as middle schoolers go up to the high schoolers, changing in attendance policy and how it does impact credits. I had done this really cool thing with the high school where they had brought students in and they got a folder. On one side was the policies and on the other side was their last year attendance record. And they like did kind of an aha moment of like what would happen if you continued attending school the way you were? What are some patterns you're noticing about your own attendance? And really like educating students on kind of policy and what happens with them in high school. So just a wonder. The budget, last night I spoke as a parent. I've made my comments as a board member here. I believe there was clear community support. I thank all the residents who came out. And I hope folks continue to reach out to the town council and share your perspective on what should be priorities in those budget. I do have a question around safety and security. I heard that there was a recent safety assessment at Eli Whitney. I'm wondering how we get that information? If that is submitted to the pre-ref committee and joint security? I think this is a great way of looking at some basic foundational security needs and how we're addressing those. So that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Who would like to go next? Mr. Ryder.
Okay, a couple of quick things. So I was hoping to be the first to remind everybody that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you, Olivia, and to everybody else that mentioned that, Mr. Coburn. But yes, that's, that's always an important thing. And I want to just remind the parents and our PTO families that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm sure there's already some great things in the works, but if anybody needs any help sharing anything online or whatever, please let me know. We can share it through Enfield PTO. Hope everybody had a great April break. As of 3:00 PM today, there's only 32 days of school left. Three early releases, so we have that going for us. When I mentioned Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'm just talking about specific grade levels in this discussion, but all the things that have been going on like at the high school the last couple of weeks, like we had the lamplighters present, you know, presentation a couple of weeks ago. But since we've last met as a board, there was the art show, there was junior planning night. I know a lot of people got involved at JFK and the high school with their, there was a best buddies walk. I know there was another walk with the Enfield Food Shelf recently. So teachers do this because they love it and they love our students and they love these causes that they can get the students excited about. And these groups wouldn't happen without staff liaisons. And just from that perspective of sort of the extracurriculars, I wanted to thank our staff from that respect this year because we always thank them for what they do for our kids from 7 to 2 or 7 to 3. But there's a lot more that goes on, you know, their day than, than just those hours. So I just want to thank our staff specifically for those kind of things. There's lots of great Safe Grad events coming up. Check enfieldpto.com/safegrad. I wanted to congratulate Kathy on her last few meetings. Now it's official. Kathy will be with us until June, the end of June. So when the school year ends, there'll be a new person in that seat. So I wanted to welcome Leslie Lawler, who was hired recently from Eli Whitney. That will be not replacing, impossible. But we'll be sitting in Kathy's chair. We'll say that. But I wanted to congratulate Kathy on that and I'm glad that we'll get to spend the rest of the school year together until that happens. And then my last question through the chair to the superintendent, if we could just get an update on Parent Square percentage of users within the student body? So like obviously I have two students in my house, I use Parent Square. I don't know if you count that as two students having a parent on it or not, but I was just wondering what percentage of users are on Parent Square? I know we don't want to reiterate things that have already gone out via Parent Square, but again, if only 40% of one building's using it and I can mention it again here at the mic and a couple dozen other people here that belong to that building, then it's worth repeating. So if you could just let us know about that when you can? And that's all I had.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. Percentage of students that have a user logged into and using Parent Square?
No, like the families.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, a percentage of the student body that we're talking, that we're actually communicating with on Parent Square.
Okay.
And I don't know how you factor in.
I'll, I'll give it to Dr. Wiley. She has a math background, she'll figure it out.
Thank you. I just wanted to know because if we're missing 50% of the people on Parent Square, then I don't see any issues with us reiterating things that are going on in the school system that somebody might not know about, so. But that's all I had for this. But that's all I had for this week. Thank you.
Just a few things tonight. I'm sorry for missing the last meeting. It was my daughter's 26th birthday. Not sure how she got that old when I'm still not old enough to have a 26-year-old.
They get older, not us.
They do. Right, I was still in shock. I watched the meeting last night, was unable to attend, but I have a few things to say pointedly about the meeting. So thank you to the residents that came and spoke regarding the budget. A special thank you to Tom Cremona for pointing out that the Town Council can't assume seniors are all in one group. I thought that was important. I can speak to the fact that my retired in-laws value the same ideal in a town that you do. I also appreciate the fact that you pointed out that thinking there is not going to be a tax increase is not realistic. There are still contractual and fixed obligations that must be met. Money still has to come from somewhere, and rather than call them taxes here in Enfield, they emerge in the form of fees. I also applaud your work and voice on the Charter Revision Committee, especially around the budget discussion and the flag discussion. Mr. Allegro, I appreciate your candidness regarding your situation with your student in the large first-grade class, that not only is the stress of having classes at large falls on the teacher, but on the students as well, and stress comes out emotionally, behaviorally, and physically. I'm so sorry regarding your son and other students who are experiencing this at such a young age. We are here, we in Enfield are better than this, and we have the opportunity to do better than this with the passing of the budget. Zach Sinoni, thank you for coming out and pointing some interesting facts about DPW and director titles and championing education, which we should be looking into DPW, right, as we learned tonight. Also pointing out that no other department in the town of Enfield has had the level of cuts that the BOE has had to deal with with so many significant impacts. Danielle Gerard, absolutely, losing Head Start will break this town. We literally sat in a Head Start training ahead of this meeting, which was so poignant about the impact that Head Start has on families. And to your point, Ms. Griffin, the training that the family advocates have regarding the confidentiality and sensitive family issues when they're engaging families is excellent because they don't want to make the families feel bad for the situation they're in and really show that they really want to help and advocate for the families and just not call in authorities and, you know, like you were saying earlier. I felt like I could hear the stress, Mr. Macchio, in your voice when you spoke about it during your budget presentation about the amount of funding we could lose for Head Start. I think what's interesting about what you said, Danielle, is about not only paying our teachers, but supporting our teachers important, is important. Just two months ago, we had a sitting town counselor chastise a teacher on a personnel matter from the dais, which was a complete abuse of power. I absolutely love how you asked the Town Council not to say anything about parenting skills. You hit the nail on the head when you said we are parenting in different times. I thought your question, where is the support from the town in this to help the parents with behavioral issues, is super important. Rather than sit up on a dais and blame, we are all in the same town and the village. Aidan Tatrill, thank you for your continued fight, bravery, and honesty, pointing out the boards that were used during last year's budget discussion, and that the Town Council has had their chances to fund. You, as a student, have seen firsthand how drastically the cuts have impacted EHS, and I appreciate you. I wish you luck next year. Melanie Kopexka, thank you for pointing out that our schools need even more than the 5.5% and that we need the 5.5 to even start to rebuild, that the rebuild needs to start happening now. Reminding the Town Council of the pleas of the staff and the parents was so important. Tricia Wright brought up very important points around special education and the law surrounding IEPs and 504s, and that what she pointed out, and I think that this point is missed very, very often, is that the lack of support staff for teachers means every student is impacted. This point is excellent and cannot be stressed enough. Maureen, thank you for coming and advocating that this is a needs-based budget. We are asking for basics just to meet the requirements, that we are not asking for anything frivolous, and thank you for reminding people that the BOE budget has been available since the end of February. Amanda, thank you for coming as a mom to advocate for your kids. I love that you have the perspective of both a BOE member and a mama bear. You are seeing firsthand what EPS looked like before and the negative impacts the cuts have had on your own kiddos and your friends' kiddos, as well as the staff. Josh Hamery, thank you for always coming out and speaking for education. I met you in 2010 when we were advocating to keep our kids' school open, and it's good to see you involved in wanting what's best for families and staff in EPS. Mr. Macchio and Chairwoman Riley, thank you very much for your thorough presentation in explaining the evolution of the budget. I was quite shocked when the Town Council said we had two budgets. I was wondering exactly which budget I missed. I thought I was present at all those meetings, so thank you for clarifying that there is in fact one BOE budget. Steve, thank you for clarifying the choice monies. For some reason, and you mentioned this, this seems to be brought up time and time again, as if people don't believe what has been explained 100 times. I have heard town counselors say, "Give me a dollar amount by student." Well, we have. And by the way, we are the lowest per pupil spending in the state of Connecticut. As far as dollar amounts, we gave you a dollar amount last year and this year. This year, we asked for 5.5%, which is $4.3 million. Another Town Council member said, "If we fund education, we need to see results." We did fund education. We had more staff and support staff, and test scores went up in grades three through eight, and the SAT scores went up in EHS. It's not the first time I said it. It's probably not going to be the last time I say it before October. The proof was in the actual test data for the 2022, 2023, and '23 and '24 school years, the staff and supports, the staff and support staff that was cut last year. I'm interested to see what the actual test data looks like this fall. I also want to take a minute to mention Izzy and Olivia. Every time we sit up here, your confidence and your passion for delivering what's happening in Enfield High is unmatched. To be just some young women who are willing to get up here and explain that you, what you're seeing in the school, and I'm sitting here and I'm like breaking down because I'm like, you guys are just asking for like basic needs in your bathrooms. But I'm also happy that we have a superintendent that shows up in the school and that you feel comfortable enough to talk about this. Unfortunately, I feel like you shouldn't have to be talking about this kind of stuff at a superintendent's advisory council meeting. But you have made this term on the Board of Ed enjoyable. I love listening to your updates. You're very engaging, and I just wanted to say thank you for that because you guys are amazing. I wanted to ask a question through the chair to Superintendent Macchio. This is an easy question. EHS, baseball and softball, where are they playing their games?
Softball is playing over at Rainard Park, and baseball is down in Powderhau, the varsity team.
Okay. They're not using JFK?
I believe they also have games there, but they're sort of splitting between which one's available.
Okay. So it was brought to my attention that we've had to reschedule baseball and softball games to later times due to some Smith busing issues?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. I just want to put out there, and I know this isn't you or Mr. O'Connell, but I think it's important that we have to understand the kind of stress this puts on families when this kind of stuff happens. Families get their athlete schedules the season, before the season starts, and they plan their lives accordingly. Now, spring sports can be a difficult season to manage, tons of rainouts. I know you guys play lacrosse. You have rainouts, but baseball and softball, there's a lot to do. What does not help is the constant rescheduling of games, not only to rain, but due to busing issues. At what point does Smith Bus correct this? We can't use COVID anymore? No longer should there be excuses. There are undue hardships on families who are juggling multiple kids' schedules, work schedules, et cetera. You're providing a service. Our AD works hard to work with CIAC and other districts for our sports schedules, and then to constantly work to have to change game schedules is getting to be unacceptable because it's impacting other kids' sports schedules of younger kids who have to get to practice, who have to get to karate, who babysitters. It's really impacting families, not just the athletes who have games. And it's got to become better. We cannot keep doing this. It happened in the fall, and now it's happening in the spring. And games are, it's just, it's got to, I had to say that because I know somebody last night who could not make it to the budget meeting because of the game time of a softball. The softball got moved from 3:45 to 5:00, and it's in Maloney, so it's in Meriden, so there was no way to do both, and that's unfortunate. And there was some juggling with a younger kid in there. I wanted to ask for an update regarding those classrooms at Stowe, how we have the two integrated classrooms coming in that we don't have space for. Do we have any updates on those? Through the chair to the superintendent, sorry, Charlotte.
We have one anticipated additional integrated pre-K class over at Stowe, and we are in
the process of having meetings. Actually, I had a meeting yesterday, and I have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow with Ms. Valley, as well as Mr. Lord and Ms. Carroll regarding locations.
Okay. So we spoke about this in leadership, and I kind of want to reiterate my sentiments in leadership, that I can't understand why the town can't give us space at Stowe for needed classroom space. We are lucky that as a town of Enfield, that we need to add two classroom spaces for incoming tiny humans, as Ms. Valley would say, but yet we are met with resistance by the town, social services regarding building space. Again, this is unacceptable. I'd like to remind the powers that be about while we are looking at modernization of PK through five, that the town will only get reimbursed for educational space. This means any space being used by social services in Stowe is not reimbursable. We need to be fiscally responsible about decisions impacting Stowe classrooms and academically how much it would benefit to have all the classrooms be at Stowe for the kids of that age. If offices have to be moved from a location, so be it. The EPS should not be looking at alternate early childhood classroom sites. It's just completely unacceptable by the town to do that. Let's see. The arts festival, the talent in Enfield from all ages never ceases to amaze me, and I wish we could find more ways to celebrate it more than once per year and more publicly. I wanted to also give a special thank you to the Women's Club who hosts this arts festival each year. Mama's done. Sorry, wasn't here last month, so I'm kind of like putting everything all together. I also wanted to mention that April is Autism Awareness Month. This is a time to recognize the town's contributions and diversity within the autism community. It is also important to note that people with autism are productive, contributing, and helpful members of our society, and your uniqueness and perspective should open our eyes to see things in a different light. Lastly, to go with Teacher Appreciation, it's on my notes. I wasn't going to read it, but I was asked to speak at the rally last week about teachers going the extra mile, and in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I will read you what I wrote. It's no secret that I decided to run for the BOE because of my kids' school closing back in 2010. The reason why the BOE became my passion and my fight was due to the teachers that my kids had encountered in Enfield Public Schools and even in their early childhood education journey at Happy Time Preschool. At the time I decided to run, my daughter was in sixth grade, my son was in fourth, and my youngest was in first grade. My kids struggled with comprehension, reading, math, and low CMT scores. They received tier supports in reading and in math, all three of them, all single, all of them. Teachers identified in them test anxiety. Some of the supports, they were getting pulled out way too much in class, and it was impeding their school day, not in a good way, and identified some social anxieties. I was so grateful that they identified many different things in my kids. Teachers in Enfield do this every day because they go the extra mile. They want what is best for each and every student beyond each lesson. They work to identify the cause of the struggle and find creative ways or strategies to help them through it. This is not stopping grades K through five. I'm thankful for the teachers my kids had in both JFK and EHS and encourage them to become the learners they were. The JFK teams were always responsive to emails, not just during school hours, one was Mr. Nucio, and worked collaboratively to work for the success of the students. At EHS, thank you to the teachers who had the most patience with my middle child, if you know, you know, but those who impacted my students by talking to them about post-high school and potential majors. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention the teachers that also coach. If you actually broke down the stipend that these coaches get, it really does not break down to very much as compared to the amount of time put in. Now, this is just academics. Countless teachers in Enfield attend their students' dance recitals, soccer games, football games, graduations. The events are endless that teachers attend outside of their work hours and on the weekends. Enfield teachers establish countless connections with not only the students, but their students' families. Now that I have older kids that have graduated, I love running into teachers who remember and genuinely ask about the kids and how they're doing, and then we take a moment to joke how they're getting older, but we are not. Those connections extend beyond Enfield Public Schools. This is why I ran for the BOE for so long and stayed, to give back to Enfield Public Schools what they gave to my family. "They" meaning teachers and support staff. It is you that make Enfield Public Schools worth fighting for when it comes to funding and valuing your profession. You matter. You matter to so many and to so many of us that you go the extra mile inside the classroom developing creative teaching to engage students and trying to provide individualized instruction. You go the extra mile outside of the classroom by staying connected with families to build strong partnerships. Teachers, you matter. And even though you can't always see it, you significantly impact students' lives with your positive learning environment, strong relationship, and helping students try to reach their full potential. My family was on the receiving end of the teaching, the support and encouragement in and out of the classroom, and I thank you all for being part of my village. Don't let anyone who sits up at this dais dull your sparkle or make you think you do anything less for this town or district. You deserve so much more than you have been given by this town. Don't ever forget that, and don't ever forget this. You matter, your students matter, your students' families matter, no matter what any elected official may tell you with their budget vote. Thank you for being awesome Enfield teachers and always going the extra mile. Thank you.
Dr. Callen.
First of all, I just wanted to add to the chorus of support of the Arts Festival, which is sponsored by the Women's Club. This festival has been going on for 60 years. That's an incredible legacy to the town, and every year it seems to get better and better. There was a time when, I believe, only the high school and maybe the junior high participated in the Arts Festival, and then they decided to expand it to the primary grades and then finally to preschool. And so it's only been getting better and better, and I think it's just such an incredible gift that's been given to the town of Enfield, and hopefully it'll go on for at least another 60 years. I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes doing a quick look back and comparing the overcrowding crisis that we're experiencing today to another overcrowding crisis that we experienced many, many years ago, back in the 1950s. When I moved to Enfield in the 1950s, the town was faced with a crisis. There were simply too many children to be accommodated by the school system. Those children, after all, were the baby boomers. Overcrowding of classrooms became an immediate and serious concern. The one thing that the baby boomers like me had going for them was that their parents were of the Greatest Generation. What words would characterize this remarkable generation? Maybe selfless, or duty-bound, or patriotic? They were all these things, but what I found most remarkable about them was their capacity for resiliency. The members of the Greatest Generation could handle anything that fate could throw at them. They lived through the great influenza pandemic. They got through the Depression. They won the Second World War, and when they were ready to rebuild their lives, they had to face a myriad of challenges that post-war America had to contend with. One of those challenges was a national educational system bursting at the seams from a tsunami of baby boomers. Where in the world would we put them all? But the can-do spirit of the Greatest Generation kicked in and rose to the challenge, and in remarkably short order, all of the necessary accommodations were made. They didn't obsess over how much the job was going to cost. They knew what they had to do, and they did it. Today, we are faced with a similar challenge owing to overcrowding of our schools. The difference is that back in the 1950s, overcrowding was due to circumstances beyond anybody's control, namely the baby boom. Today, the problem of overcrowding is due to budgetary constraints, that is to say circumstances of our own making. The Greatest Generation didn't stop to ask who was to blame. They just set their minds to solving the problem, and they succeeded. The question is, do we have the fortitude, the selflessness, and the sense of purpose to do the same? Let's get moving. We know what needs to be done. Let's pass the superintendent's proposal and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. Anybody else? Olivia?
I just wanted to speak on the Smith bus issue. I'm speaking from a student-athlete perspective who plays three seasons of sports. It's definitely very, very stressful when your game gets changed the last minute, and then you're running around for rides. I mean, now I can drive, so it's not as much of a stress, but for all the younger underclassmen in the high school, they have to contact their parents. Sometimes their parents aren't around, they don't get out of work till 5:00 maybe, and it can be very stressful. But to end on a positive note, I just wanted to bring up how the upperclassmen who can drive do love to step up and give rides to anyone who needs rides and bring people around, and they get things moving a lot smoother than they would if they couldn't provide those rides. So. those rides. So, yeah.
Thanks, Olivia. Okay, so I've got something last. All right, so I wanted, obviously since we're not going to be here next week, well, sitting up here, thank you to all the teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week and all the nurses on Nurse Appreciation Day. You guys do a monumental task. I mean, we just heard today what all, what the nurse does over at Stowe with all of the head start requirements. That is a Herculean task, too. I know it's like a revolving door for you guys, so thank you for all that you do. Thank you for bringing up the issue of the bathrooms. We're definitely going to go ahead and we'll address that for sure, because that's, that's not acceptable. Everybody said everything about the Arts Fest, it was awesome. We went on Friday. I'm always blown away by all of the things there. This time, there seemed to be more sculptures, which I really liked. So kudos to all the students that had a piece in the art show. They were amazing, and kudos to the musicians who played and sang. They were amazing. I just wanted to touch on, Tina, your comments about the building space and the, at Stowe and reimbursement and stuff. So when we had our last joint leadership meeting, it was the superintendent and the town manager and the mayor and myself, that was, that was the first thing right out of the chute that we brought up, and they're going to do like a building inventory, like a who's who of what's in there and how much space they use, so they're going to start working on that.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys bringing that up because I know it's, it's a little bit maddening.
Yeah. And then I also was invited to speak at the teacher rally that they had, but I just declined only because, well, we're like in the middle of bargaining, and I didn't want to mess anything up for any parties at all involved, so I figured the best thing is to just not go. That was just my position on that. And then, full transparency, I guess the audit that was requested is moving forward because yesterday I got an email to fill out some fraud questionnaire, so working on that, and then I have to submit it back to CBIZ.
Which audit?
The audit that the town requested of the Board of Ed, that they went out to bid for. That's, yeah, so it's moving along, so. Yeah. So I have to fill that back up, and then I have to respond back to them, but I just wanted to let everybody know that that's obviously moving ahead. And that was...
Charlotte, if I could just interject.
Yes.
Let me get in touch with Lorena, because we sort of have two audits ongoing, right? Because fiscal year '24 hasn't been wrapped up either. So, I mean, we've got...
No problem.
Yeah, there's a lot of audits happening. I'll try to get you verification as to which one, because I know Mrs. Narros also had to complete the app, the questionnaire.
That's where we're at. I just want to let you guys know. Okay?
Yes, go ahead. Talking about money. Since you brought up the EHS building money, Mr. Macchio, I just really appreciate you sharing that information with us, and I just appreciate the due diligence at the person at the state really looking to find someone to respond to the email, because obviously one of the people he was trying to contact doesn't work here anymore and was the last person on record, so I understand that, but I really appreciate you taking the initiative to, once you got in touch with that person, that person got in touch with you, to take the initiative to make sure that that was signed off on. I really appreciate you doing that and being on top of that, which is definitely something you're very good at, so thank you.
And thanks for the follow-up with Mr. Dagel, because the question that I had for you was, does it happen on all of the projects, like even the roofs? So the answer is yes, so we will obviously keep our eyes peeled for whatever may come because there was a lot of roofs in the pipeline, so we'll keep our eyes peeled.
Yeah, it was a very interesting conversation with Randy, so at some point, I don't know if you guys want to have him, once he fin, finalizes the JFK project, I don't know if you want to have him swing into like leadership again, so he can tell you like JFK is complete because he's anticipating the final sign-off to be in three months, and then he can kind of give you guys a more formalized timeline and how he reconciles the PO. I don't actually know if that's his rule, but he did it, and you guys know the backstory with that.
So I've already added a couple of, you know, years-down-the-road ticklers into my calendar. Basically, you know, each year I'll continue to check in on it, and I will, I'm very thankful for the gentleman at the state. He was incredibly helpful, and it's nice to call the state when somebody actually picks up, and you can have the conversation with them, so it was nice of him.
I feel like it's not often we get somebody at that level that does the due diligence to keep persisting to find somebody to respond to an email, so I'm appreciative of that.
All right. We're going to move on to unfinished business, which we don't have any, and new business, we have policy revisions, first reading. Take it away, Mrs. Kuschman.
Sure. Though policies 5113.2 truancy and 5145.54 civility are mentioned in our packet, these will be addressed under new business at our May 13 regular board meeting. Policy 5113, attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism. Though this policy is much more succinct than our current policy, this proposed new policy from Shipman simply directs the administration to adopt and maintain regulations and procedures that align our district with state law. For the sake of transparency, these extensive regulations were included in our packet to provide transparency to the board and community. The forms from pages 17 on in these regulations are merely in draft form, as they will be modified to take advantage of the new EduClima software and the Parent Square Attendance Program that Mr. Dag mentioned this evening, and the district will be deploying these this summer. Parents and students will see those updated forms and more detailed information on attendance requirements in their school handbooks starting this fall. Though the regulations were included in our packet, it is only the policy on which we will be voting. Please note while the current policy number is being maintained, the title and text of this proposed policy, if passed, will fully replace our current one. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5113, attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism.
Motion made by Ms. Kuschman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. I need discussion, Mr. Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So all pods is in advance. I'm going to be a little long-winded, and I didn't say two months during policy committee because I wasn't fully up to speed with kind of reading it as I have now, so we're obviously continuing our progression of converting our CAAB-based policies over to our Shipman and Goodwin models. I've made my stance known that I'm a supporter of less policies, increasing efficiencies, and, well, at the same time maintaining a strong framework and guardrails for government and operations. Throughout this process, I've kind of observed the pattern where CAAB policies are definitely too exhaustive, and they do include countless optional policies, while Shipman provides a more basic framework of mandated policies. However, in some cases, some do seem so brief that it would be almost improper to call them a policy, and that's kind of what I'm looking at when I'm looking at this proposed policy 5113 regarding attendance. The current proposal decimates four pages of existing policy to replace it with two paragraphs to provide a very general direction. Full implementation of the, what would be the policy and procedures is shifted down to the administrative regulation, which would include everything from definitions to district procedures and so forth. As a general reminder, this board is a legislative body that passes laws or policies that require due process and majority action. Administrative regulations are one level below us, a form of administrative law implemented by an agency or organization, which in this case would be the discretion of the superintendent. While I understand the need to commonly delegate down to our superintendent, and I do understand our current superintendent is not one to make decisions in isolation, often invoking the council of his district administrative council, I see this as beginning a slippery slope where the board yields away another one of its responsibilities. I recently read a quote that I don't know where it's attributed to. "When you give away your power, good luck getting it back." While other policies we have converted will only affect a small population or come up in rare instances, something like attendance touches every single family and every single student. We just had a presentation on LEAP and our efforts on chronic absenteeism, and, well, as we do know that that is one of our accountability index indicators that contribute, that contributed to the designation of our current status as Alliance District. While at this point I don't have any substantive objections to the administrative regulations in draft format, this is an example where I see it more fitting to retain a lot of this language in the policy and allow the board to have a better role in, of the policy and the oversight into issues such as this.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Anybody else? Ms. Pickett?
I'm going to piggyback on you, Phil. I think policymaking is one of our most important jobs, so we don't have actually a lot of large functions, budgeting, policy, we review curriculum. Policy is really important, Phil. And so I guess I'm seeing a trend as well and concern around our policies. I think I referenced in our last board meeting, we had one policy that went from pages to nothing, and then there was still our student, I think it was like the student alcohol, the one that's here in our packet, is still a very lengthy policy. So how are we determining what becomes admin regs and what is actually policy? I'm unsure what the difference is there. I think you described what the difference is, but it seems like per policy, it's determining if we're actually going to write it in policy or if it's going to become an admin reg. So a question I have specifically around this policy, because you are right, attendance is a school-wide data point and important piece, is what is our role in the admin regs? Because the policy, I will say, is just too vague to even say if I support it or not, and from my understanding, the admin regs are your regulations writing out the procedures. So do we have any role in proposing adjustments to those, and like, what is that piece like?
So the way I usually operate, as Mr. Coburn said, is not in isolation, so you would, the policy committee would see the policies and the regulations. The main only, the only difference really between the two is that we're not required to have a formal Board of Education vote to adopt the regulations, whereas per your bylaws, you do need to have a Board of Education vote for your policies. I think, much like you have in your packet here, you're going to see the policies and you're going to see the regulations. Oftentimes, you will have regulations that are incredibly hefty when they go through multiple iterations and they continually require updates. Those updates will get brought forward to the Board of Education, and you'll be made aware of them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I guess that's where I would say I do have some concerns, because, for example, tonight's policy, even our homeless youth policy from last night, or from last, last meeting, the regulations are actually more important than the policy. And so thinking about how the work is done is really important, and how families and students and staff are made aware of the regulations. So I know in tonight's presentation, that's updating handbooks, letting folks know, but that's not just with that policy, that's with the homeless youth policy, you know, from last time as well. So I will say I do have some concerns over the briefness of the policy and then what, some of the pieces that are in the regs, so I'm just going to say all of my piece at once, and then I do have some specific questions. So I do have concerns about how policy is implemented. There's always a potential for bias, personal interpretation of an administrator, and the reality is this policy has a huge potential to impact vulnerable families, and there's other policies connected to this. So we mentioned the high school and credit denial or retrieval, thinking critically that attendance is a huge factor in students' ultimate success. We need to remember that attendance is a data point, that penalizing kids for not attending school without addressing the root cause doesn't actually help. We have to acknowledge that there is actual potential for this policy to, to cause harm based on how it's implemented. So unfortunately, I've known of times when this policy has been weaponized against families, for example, as a reason to call DCF, or been a reason that a student is denied credit. So I am concerned about what our structures of support are around attendance, not just phone calls and meetings. I know we've heard about LEAP here tonight, but it seems like that's really impacting just a small subset of our students. So what are we doing to support students and families to address the root causes of the barriers to attendance? And recognizing that some kids are legitimately absent, and that their root cause most potentially is a medical issue, and this isn't something that can be fixed but can be supported. I also want to say there are pieces of this policy that I'm going to ask specific questions around documentation, but asking for written documentation can be really challenging for families, especially folks who are already struggling, working multiple jobs. I don't know about you, but have you ever tried to get in touch, sorry, Dr. Kellman, with your doctor and actually get them to call you back that day to get a letter to you and sign it is like an act of God in itself? So I am concerned about the impact on students and families. My point being, our policy is important, but the regulations and how this is implemented is actually the most important. I'm interested in the human interactions and how we're using training and structures of support to ensure that our staff are intervening with families and students in the most supportive way. I'm also interested in knowing how we're using attendance data in our 504 and IEP meetings, or what we do when a student with one of those protections is struggling to attend school regularly. How is attendance part of our multi-tiered system of support and addressed in our person-centered, trauma-informed, and empathetic way? Janet, I do want to just say one piece, I'm not going to hold on to that one, actually. I do have some specific questions. One is Maureen brings up the great concern around tardies, and two tardies equals an absence. That's nowhere in this policy. Tardy is not even defined in the regulations. So I do wonder if there's some potentially missing pieces or some practices that are happening that aren't officially in our policies or regulations, or might exist in other policies or regulations, that I think connecting the dots and putting those pieces together would be important. One C in the regulations talk about the written documentation. Number four says it needs to be written, not in an email or a text. I'll say as a parent, I send an email every time my kid is absent. If I have to like send in a handwritten no A, I have never been doing that. So I think just kind of looking clearly at those pieces. And then one G is the determination of what is in attendance. I'm, when I just look at those three categories, I know there are other reasons why kids are not in school, too, being sent home due to illness of a nurse. They're dysregulated, and we say, hey, we might just want to send them home, even though that's not a practice we should be doing, but thinking about how are we documenting that and how is that impacting attendance? And this could be an area that the tardy piece is addressed, not saying that I'm in favor of tardiness equalling or equating absences. So I just want to point out to, to the powers that be around the regulation pieces, that those are areas that we might want to think more clearly about. And then I will just say, I know it was said that we are going to be talking about policy 5145.54 in our next meeting, but I want to just say again that this is concerning to me around kind of how policies are being drafted, some very short, some very lengthy. 5145.54 is part of a bundle of policies. 5145 has lots of different point blah blah, point blah blah. These policies protect our most vulnerable students and their civil rights. I'm not comfortable repealing anything without seeing what is being the replacement. There was a draft proposal that was shared, and I'm very concerned about the detailed nature of that policy, which are not regulations.
All right, well, that was a lot to unpack at once. I can tell you, and, and maybe we pause this tablet and have Mr. Dag come, but at that policy meeting, Mr. Dag did go into different facets of, like, they're going to change things to like a verified absence or a non-verified absence, so like, if you're sick, that's totally kosher, that's fine. And to have to be signed out by a doctor, they said they would also use the school nurse to be able to sign off for those things, so it would not impact people who could not get there or afforded, or whatever the case may be. There would be, you know, obviously, family vacations are not excused absences. So there was a, is a lengthy thing that is there, so maybe we need to have John Dag come and maybe answer some of the questions, and we table this for now. But also, the last one you brought up was the civility, and that, correct me if I'm wrong, because we talked about it in policy, that's basically being repealed because the civility is within many, many other policies that we have. Like, it's, it's in our 9,000 series, it's in with students, it's in with, it's in with all of them, so we figured that you would not need it because it is duplicated so many multiple times within multiple other policies that we have. I don't know, there's probably a thousand other points that I missed, but those are the ones that I can remember from that policy. the ones that I can remember from that policy meeting.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Charlie. And I guess, I'm not saying that we have to table it, but I think I'm just going to put here on the mic and in the record for those who are on policy committee, really thinking about a uniform way that we're drafting policy and what we're drafting as regs. And I think for us, our job is to approve policy. I think it's nice to see what the regs are, and like, and I think that actually comes after a policy is written sometimes, because you have to think about what does that look like in implementation? And as we're seeing, things are in draft form, because we're waiting for things to be updated on the reg side. So, I just, my suggestion would be to kind of think about uniformity. And then, my concern, and I actually was trying to find the old tapes of when we passed the civility policy, because I remember having some concerns about how we interpret that, and like, and that this, that was, does exist in other policies. I guess I'm just going to be fully honest here. When I look at the, where that policy sits, it seems to me that it's crafted and in that place in our policies, because it's around ensuring civility to our most protected and vulnerable students. And it's around civility of Title VI, Title IX. And I think either, if we're going to repeal that, I want to look very carefully at the other policies that we're claiming that it's part of, and ensuring that specific students are protected in those policies as well.
So, would it be helpful if before that that happened, that we could provide a list of other policies that contain the civility language?
Yeah. And I think for me, it's really ensuring, because the civility is under our Title VI, Title IX policies, ensuring that where this, where we're saying it's existing in other policies, we're pretty explicit about ensuring that specifically Title VI and Title IX are protected.
So, as Mrs. Cushman said, so tonight, we're just voting on the policy, not the regulations. So, when and how would we see how the regulations are coming along? I guess it'd be a question we should ask Central Office. Because the reason why the regulations are not a part of this new condensed policy is because the regulations are both age and school-based. So, like, K-2 has different rules than 912, and the middle school has different rules than Stowe. That's why there are so many regulations. And they're age-specific, they're different in the high school, because they have the word credits in them, which they wouldn't have until that point. So, we pass this policy, and then could we just see the new regulations when they're done? Like, that kind of thing.
So, we're at first reading this evening.
We're in discussion.
Right. In discussion of first, during the first reading. There's a lot of different, there's a lot to unpack there, in terms of what Amanda had talked about, which would literally be an entire policy committee meeting, just about attendance. There are a number of changes that would go into place in terms of practices and procedures, all surrounding attendance. There's a lot of professional development from the administrative side to the secretarial side, and communication to the parent and guardian side, in terms of what truly is excused, what truly is unexcused, how do you go from one to the other? Then, we bring in the caveat of the written is a great point, and we've had a number of conversations about that, because there are procedures you can put into place, there is software that you can utilize, Parent Square, as you will hear in, or as you may have heard in the past, and we'll talk about as part of my evaluation, it's one of the items we're instituting, is to allow that streamlining of information, because it is difficult to get all of the written notes and all that. What we must have, and really the reason the word written is there in confirmation versus, is to get away from the, you know, Mr. Longy pretends he is my father and calls me in as absent for the day, and therefore it becomes excused. It's about confirming that the parent or guardian is truly aware that the person is not in school. And again, falsifying notes has happened for years in all ages, in varieties of reasons, right? But Parent Square would allow that login to occur, where you would need the code that we would then be able to receive that information, and then that could be stored. So, that's one way of doing it. Again, practices about how the secretaries are having the conversations with the people. If that secretary, if I'm talking to Amanda Pickett, and I know it's Amanda Pickett, and Amanda Pickett is calling in her child, what would be the form that we would have that secretary sign off on to then turn over to the administrator, so that you don't have to then go and write a handwritten? There's all of those steps along the way. That's what all needs to be clarified within the regulations, but that also needs, or practices and procedures then taught to everybody underneath it. So, there is a lot of work to be had on this still. And this will be an item where those regulations are going to continue to come up through, whether it's policy committee, and, you know, I may, I may want to offer the suggestion of literally just having a special policy committee to hash all of that out.
I'll just add a couple of comments. I know at some point, we've talked about, too, just the practice of maybe getting our administrative regulations posted to the websites. I know a lot of districts do, and, you know, we haven't yet. I know we've brought it up, and I think that's definitely something we need to implement, especially whether this passes, or we refine it, or some of the other stuff where we have the administrative regulations. So, that they are publicly available is kind of that centralized place beyond also the school-specific handbooks, because a lot of stuff we've talked about is obviously going to be incorporated in the handbooks as well. And a lot of the attendance stuff would probably be talked about there. Just to Mrs. Pickett's point, too, just with the policy, one last piece, and I guess for public awareness, too, right? So, you know, normal legislative bodies, like bills are always like sponsored and stuff like that, and you kind of have like a dedicated person that writes stuff. Honestly, from what I've seen, most of our stuff is, we derive it from a service, whether it's CAE or Shipman, we basically get from that council or that provider, like, hey, here's a draft of the policy and the administrative regulations given to us. We get work seats and trackers of, you know, now that we're merging, hey, these are duplicate policies, these are optional, these are not needed, so on and so forth. So, a lot of it is, it's not necessarily initiated by the committee. I mean, the committee still ultimately has control of what we pass, what we hold, what we, you know, and there's some play within words and stuff with, you know, not, obviously we can't go against, you know, some of the laws and stuff that go into it. But a lot of it's kind of initiated by the services handed to us. We review it, maybe we tweak it a little bit, we send it up, and then it goes into the discussion, where we talk about where we control the policy. And then, the superintendent and Central Office has that administrative regulation. And also, to Mr. Ryder's point, then if, you know, if we are passing policy, what are we doing as a, like a deadline maybe for that administrative regulation? So, it's another piece of, you know, something that we can discuss and think about.
Could I just follow up? Because, sorry to cut you off. Do you want to go first?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Mr. Coburn had brought up, and we've begun the shift to, as we go through and create the new policies and regulations, we are talking about, I've always been in a place where the policies and the regulations are all available, and they're all available on the website. You literally just map them out that way. So, we are beginning that turnover process as we get going on this, as we transition, we, again, a lot of different transitions happening. As the new policies are created, whether or not they go into paper form and held in a binder versus just posted onto the website, I think the website is the most logical place for them. That's where everybody goes to find them and to look at them. With the number of policies that we currently have on the website, it's, to then add the regulations there currently, would, good luck figuring out where everything is. But that is a process that we are going to undergo.
So, I think what I would like to then piggyback on exactly that is, I think, A, policy shifts and change, I think we all see in the legislature, they make a minor change, and then all of a sudden, we have to like, update our policy, because like, the age has changed, or something's adjusted, and like, that then takes and bogs down our process. So, I can understand our concise potential policies. But I do think it's really important for us to acknowledge that the regulations, the procedures, is admin-defined. You all know the systems and structures of the school and how things kind of function. I think us maybe providing some feedback is thoughtful, but like, it is your regulations, and I think that's important for us to also be mindful on. I also just wanted to add, Phil, I understand kind of CAE and Shipman and our attorney's role in kind of providing policy to us. There are also some policies that are just like mandated as they're written, which also kind of ties our hands sometimes in those situations, so.
Dr. Kellman?
I just add a couple of really kind of technical concerns about this policy. And one was, I see, when a student is truant, the superintendent or designated shall provide notice to the student's parents or guardians of the information concerning the existence and availability of the 211 infoline program and other pediatric, mental, and behavioral health screening services and tools described in our [inaudible].
Dr. Kellman?
Yes.
We don't have the new regulations yet that we're following, where that might be what it is or was suggested to us, but they haven't done any of the regulations for this policy yet. We're just voting on the policy itself. And then, there's going to be regulations written to different age levels and different school levels, and, yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that, because I was wondering if this was a real concern. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So, we still have motion on the floor?
I second it.
Yep.
Got us a discussion.
Yep.
An hour later, now we're here.
Yes, roll call, please, Kathy. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
No.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. All right. Moving on, Board Committee reports. Curriculum Committee.
Our last curriculum meeting was held on April 24th. It was a vision of a graduate update. Ms. Middleton took the committee through the process that they have been engaged in to develop a vision of a graduate for EPS. Introductory activities and focus groups were held with staff and family during the 23, 24 school year. So, during the current year, the Administrative Council has been engaged in monthly activities that have helped us further define what our vision of a graduate is. So, in April, all staff was given a survey for feedback, which included choosing between two acronyms that had been created through the work of the Administrative Council. The acronyms are made up of the overarching themes that we value in our community and our students. The acronym that was chosen in the survey by the administrators and the staff was CLIME. The letters in CLIME represent C, represents collaboration and communication, L, lifelong learning and literacy, I, innovation and problem-solving, M, mindset for success, and B, building character and community. The committee discussed the process and the importance of these attributes becoming a part of the EPS culture. A formal presentation will be given to the board at the May 27th meeting, and our next curriculum meeting is May 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Finance and Budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, finance and budget has not met since the last regular meeting of the board. Just some quick comments to report. The committee was notified that the district is expecting some revenue in the approximate amount of $122,014 around this July. This is a result of direct medical service cost reimbursement for FY '23, so following the tunes of just taking years to get some money. Also, as discussed in the superintendent's update yesterday, April 28th, the board chair and superintendent publicly presented the BOE-approved budget for FY '25 and '26 to the town council during their public hearing on the municipal annual budget. Presentation is available and has been available on the Enfield EPS website, and the meeting itself can obviously be replayed on Enfield TV, which is also streamed to YouTube. All that being said, the next meeting of the BOE Finance and Budget Committee is scheduled for Monday, May 5th at 5:00 p.m. at Central Office.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Leadership Committee. Our next meeting is May 7th at 5:00 p.m., followed by our special meeting at 6:00 for the whole board to go over the, oh, policy, did I miss policy? Sorry, Policy Committee. Sorry, we had that long discussion. I was like, what were you talking about?
We've got another hour, isn't it?
Yeah, we got, you're good.
Well, you know, now you know what we did at the Policy Committee.
We just reactivated it.
Yeah, you know.
But our next meeting will be held next month, Tuesday, May 15th, at 5:30.
Okay. All right, Leadership, I just told you, so, we're good.
Liaison reports.
Any school reports or updates? Mr. Coburn?
All right. I'll do my usual shout-out to the friends and family of Henry Barnard School. Last week was a busy back-to-school week, following breaks, and included Spring Picture Day, which was held last Thursday. Tomorrow, April 30th, is Citizen Science Month Spirit Day. Students are encouraged to don their science-themed Big Cat shirts and other swag, which was made possible through grant activity funds. Other school-specific dates to keep an eye on include Wednesday, May 14th, for Family Music Night with Miss Renee. That'll be from 6:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. And then, Spring Field Day, which will be Thursday, May 29th. Also note that papers did go home last week regarding the need for volunteers to facilitate Field Day, with two sessions available for Phil, 9:30 to 11:30, and 12:40 to 2:30. Of course, if you're able to do both, that would be great. So, please consider joining if able. And as usual, obviously, keep an eye on Parent Square for the Big Cat newsletter, which usually comes out on Fridays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Mr. Ryder?
Couple of short updates from Eli Whitney. Their Field Day is scheduled for Wednesday, May 28th. A flyer will be coming home this week, so check your backpacks. It'll be posted also on the PTO Facebook page, and a newsletter with the link for volunteers to sign up is coming soon. Rain date will be June 3rd. Our 5th graders will be going to JFK twice in the next few weeks. Once, they'll be heading to see The Lion King on May 5th, and then they'll be going on their Eli Whitney Building Tour of JFK. They'll be taking the bus over and seeing the building from the inside on May 14th. And lastly, we celebrated Arbor Day last Friday by planting a tree at Whitney, and all of our 5th grade students took home a sapling to plant and care for at home. I have a junior this year, she'll be a senior in the fall, and when we were in 5th grade, we got our tree from Eli Whitney at Arbor Day, and it's, it's about maybe four, five, six feet high right now.
Nice.
I'd say five or six.
Very cool.
Yeah. And it was little, like, when we got it, because we had to bring it home on the bus. But yeah, I think it's about five, I'm going to say five. I have to mow around it, so. But I just wanted to, and I got to check on Walter's tree, see if that's up. But I assume it is. That's all we have from Whitney.
Thank you. Anybouts? Ms. Akri?
Just Crandall important dates. The next Barnard-Crandall PTO meeting is May 13th. And on April 29th, progress reports are issued. On May 5th, they're also going to the field trip to JFK to see the play The Lion King. And May 5th, also, the 4th graders start the SBAC math testing. Prudence Crandall yearbooks are on sale now. The order deadline, though, is May 5th. 5th grade families, though, do not need to order the yearbook, thanks to the generosity of the Leah Auto Group. Every 5th grader will receive a free yearbook.
I just wanted to add for Crandall, because I got to go to their assembly last Friday. They actually have one of the state winners there for the fire prevention posters, so I just wanted to congratulate her. She gets to go onto the state, her, actually, not onto the state, but her artwork is in, now going to be published in a calendar with other winners throughout the state for fire prevention. I thought that was pretty cool.
Anybody else? Dr. Kellman?
Just a quick. Just a quick reminder, actually, Phil just touched on this, but Kite, in partnership with Enfield Public Schools, Enfield Family Resource Center, and the Enfield Public Library, are hosting Enfield Unplugged from May 5th through the 9th. And families are encouraged to reduce their overall screen time, and in return are offered free activities or ideas to do as a family, with chances to win raffle prizes. Calendar is coming out shortly. Keep a lookout on Kite's Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kellman. Anybody else?
Before we move on to the other committees, I did have a question. Last year, we had to do it, so I was wondering, do we need to change dates or times for the Culture and Arts Commission's Summer Music Fest? They don't, we're good? Okay. Perfect.
We posted it that way, so you're going to meet earlier to avoid the noise.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Joint Facilities Committee. All right, Joint Facilities Committee.
Next meeting is May 8th.
Okay. Joint Insurance Committee. We're going to have a meeting soon, for sure, but I don't know when yet. But we're definitely going to have a meeting soon to go over some reports that came in. Joint Security Committee?
May 9th.
Yep. Enfield Mental Health Committee?
The next Mental Health and Wellness Committee meeting is scheduled for May 7th. Elena Josephin will do a presentation of the program titled Child First.
Thank you. And Pre-REF Committee?
Sure. We already addressed the focus group question that I had, and then Superintendent Macchio went over the RFP and explained that was, and the date, so I appreciate that. After talking to Randy, though, this weekend, and I know he expressed his concern with you to Charlotte when we were touring Prudence Crandall, there is major concern regarding the lack of urgency with the Finance Director's Office regarding this project. In particular, like the RFP, we lost two months on that project. So I would be remiss, I told him, if I did not mention that at this meeting, because it wasn't a lack of effort on our part, and there was a lot of frustration that really set our project back by two months. And we haven't been able to meet because of it and have any type of discussion.
We just got an email today about the pressure's on because
Yes.
there might, there's legislation maybe in the pipeline to reduce reimbursement rates now?
Yes.
Lower them, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we need to have cooperation and hustle here, I think, at this point.
I think the point to, to Randy's point is getting an RFP is nothing new to the Finance Office and the people in it. We've had two major school projects that required the same request for qualifications and proposal. And it's a gripe, nothing's going to change, but it's something that needed to be said publicly because we are on a very tight timeline for this project, and for the simple fact that we lost two months to, um, people saying it wasn't their responsibility, and then not responding to emails has been nothing short of maddening, especially because the people that are putting all the work into trying to get this done are volunteers and are not paid positions. And that's very frustrating and almost disrespectful. So I did, after talking to Randy, because as the person who is actually running this committee, and then the person who helped explain about the 4.3 and the reconciliation process, and the person who helped explain about the roof process, the JFK process, I mean, he knows what he's doing, and we should, we should be more helpful, and he's very easy to work with. And I don't think that, I'm worried about our timeline and anything else that we're going to need. And I know you're very helpful for that, and we did ask him like point-blank, is there somebody else, what can we do? And there's not a lot we can do, but I would be very remiss if I did not put that out there. So hopefully with this RFP out there, we can start meeting and have more of an update. We don't have any tours scheduled right now, because right now, after talking to Randy, the Town Council's very busy with all their budget meetings, and it just seems like a very busy time, since we have nothing to talk about, that we just not tour the schools right now and let the Town Council work on their budget. So that's all I have.
So then maybe, my assumption is, after May 19th, sometime right after that, we'll have another meeting.
Right.
Yeah, because how long does it take to get responses in after it comes back? Like, immediately, like, or do we have to like?
That's, I believe, when they, when they have to open the bids.
Okay.
So, it's going to be right after May 19th, we'll begin together.
All right.
Yeah, so Randy, you know, felt a sense of relief, and he felt like, once we hit May 19th, we could really hit the ball, hit the ground running and really start amping up on the committee's work.
May, just interject one thing. So I was glad that Randy was able to come to one of our recent leadership meetings. But the other thing he needs from the school system as a whole is feedback from staff, from end-users.
Right.
So the one thing that we are doing, I mean, I know we did lose two months, but we have all these, you know, chats coming up between May 5th and May 28th, and the data coming from Central Office, you know, early June. So at least, we're making some headway while the other wheels are spinning.
Oh, absolutely, and that was one of Randy's questions, like he wanted an update on the groups, which I knew, I had total faith in John Degg and Central Office on getting the ball rolling on that. But it was helpful to have the dates, because I'm sure, given the opportunity, Randy will be able to attend, and any one of us could really attend to listen in on that, because I think it would be helpful for anyone to sit in and listen to the perspective of the teachers, which some of us were able to hear directly. So yeah, I think that we are getting work done in the meantime, so we're doing the best we can.
Mr. Kober?
Yeah, so just two quick questions, and I see Mr. Ryder touched on one of them, because we talked about the pre-REF staff input sessions that are all scheduled. And I know when the pre-REF Committee was formed, one of the other big things was like, you know, the public input. So has the committee talked about, or is there plans to do like public input sessions or working groups? Does that come up yet?
He didn't necessarily, we haven't really talked about public input, but we have talked about like community conversations about, you know, what the plans would look like, information about, you know, costs, what it would cost to do nothing, what it would cost to do this plan, what it would cost to do that plan. And having many conversations. Also, he would like to go to like the Senior Center, many different PTOs, just having all kinds of conversations where I guess the community would be able to give their input, but not, it would kind of be like after the plans were done in order to get the, the word out for voting and supporting the referendum.
Yeah, that makes sense, definitely like that advertising, public relations piece. So that actually reminded me one other thing, and I know you guys, you guys have been doing mostly, you had like your organizational meeting and your tours and stuff like that, so you probably haven't had any like structured meetings yet. But have you guys talked about like, are you guys planning to like on your agendas, like leave a block for public comment or audiences? Does that come up, so at least the public has? I mean, obviously they can listen, look at the minutes and show up, and, you know, generally not talk. But if you guys have at least public comment as a rolling option, then certain people probably show up, so.
Yep.
That'll be, okay, awesome.
Yeah, no, we discussed that in like our first structured meeting, but we have not been able to have any subsequent structured meetings.
Yeah. Definitely, everybody in that, in that meeting was definitely like, yes, we want the public to talk at these meetings, come in. What he said at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting was an idea?
Something like that.
Something like that, yeah. So definitely, come to the meeting when we have them, and there'll definitely be public comments.
The important thing is making sure that the public has the information and feels informed enough to know when they go in to vote, that, you know, they want to support this or not support it. Make sure all the facts are there, but it's like a road tour, so.
I think, I just want to add one piece, and I think this is, because it came up last night in the budget conversation, the importance of our facilities and capital costs. Enfield is a little unique, the fact that our town takes our buildings and all of those pieces. I do just want to say that it's concerning and a loophole and a barrier if our, the fiscal office and the town sides not being supportive and helpful in this situation, so. And just again, reiterating my point, that per pupil expenditure is not calculated based on capital costs.
Correct.
All right. Okay. All right, anybody else? We're good? All right, approval of minutes, I need a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes of April 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kober.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor? That is eight in favor, none against.
Seven.
Seven.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, sorry.
I wasn't here.
Seven in favor, none against, and one abstention. Okay. Mr. Kober, do we have any approval of council and parent?
There is none.
Mr. Ryder, do we have any correspondence in Board Communication?
Nothing that was not included into our amazing packet.
Okay, so I'm going to need a motion to go into executive session, and there'll be no votes made and no votes needed afterwards. And I, are we going to have to make a motion to extend the meeting past 10? No, we're good? Okay. All right.
Motion made to enter executive session to discuss personnel.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kober, second by Ms. Pickett, all those in favor? Eight in favor, none against. Thank you, and have a good evening.